Good morning. We're going to get started. Thank you. The members will take their seat and the visitors can retire behind the rail. We're going to get started. Before we start, I'd just like to ask anyone who has a device, cellphone, or any other electronic device, please turn it off or on silent if you can. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Whitney Blunden of a place called Restoration Ministries. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Brooks. I would ask all guests, members, and visitors to please rise. Pastor?
Let us bow our heads. Oh God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast, and our eternal home. Gracious and all wise Father, we honor you and we praise you for this amazing opportunity. As we look at the close of this year and how faithful you have been to us, we know that it is nothing but your mercy that we have not been consumed. And we thank you, Lord, for the divine favor that is upon this room right now to make strategies, to extract wisdom, to navigate through some very difficult and turbulent times. But we thank you right now that we have the assurance that comes from you, that everything is going to be all right. It may not be what we want it to be, and it may not look like we want it to look, but we know that you will always be on time. You may not always come when we want you, but you're always on time. And we just thank you right now for this great council of people. We need your wisdom, we need your mercy, and we need your direction like never before. This country is bleeding, and there has to be a bomb from Gilead. And we give you praise as we get ready for the healing and the restoration and the revitalization of this great city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here today. Counsel will be at ease. Thank you very much. In our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 3rd. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 3rd, 2022, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 3rd, 2022. Stand and approve all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, there are three requests for leaves of absence today from Members O'Neill, Member Thomas, and Member Gudier.
Thank you. Leave shall be granted with those members. Thank you very much, Councilman. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on our calendar circulated prior to our session today. Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters of consideration today may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Bass may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the council session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And the Chair will ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession today.
From the mayor, to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on November 9, 2022, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on November 3, 2022, Bill Number 220659A and Bill Number 220660. And that on November 16, 2022, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on November 3, 2022, Bill Number 220813. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body. A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment... Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District, including on the following streets: North 7th Street, North 8th Street, North 9th Street, North 10th Street, North 13th Street, North 31st Street, North 32nd Street, North 33rd Street, North Franklin Street, Mellon Street, East Norris Street, West York Street, West Arizona Street, North Comack Street, Parish Street, North Perth Street, and Turner Street pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to a certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they run situated in the Seventh Councilmanic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered by our members today.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers two resolutions. A privileged resolution recognizing November 14 through November 20, 2022 as National Apprenticeship Week and honoring apprenticeship PHL for its continued commitment to connecting Philadelphians to family-supporting careers.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution declaring each Friday in December 2022 as Shop Black Business Friday in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
Councilwoman Gimm offers one bill, co-introduced by Councilman Driscoll, entitled an ordinance amending Section 2101 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Residence Requirements to Revise the Residence Requirement for Appointment to Civil Service City Employment.
Verdict committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Patrick Eating for 20 years of service as President of the Philadelphia Council AFL-CIO and recognizing his civic leadership and manifold accomplishments fighting for working families, building the power of Philadelphia workers, and winning labor rights and policies that meaningfully improve the lives of Philadelphians.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, Council President. I wanted to just very briefly address the bill that was introduced a little bit earlier by Mr. Decker. First of all, I want to thank you, Council President. On this body, we share a central commitment to ensuring that our government can provide the basic and most critical resources that every resident needs. And we know that that means continuing to push through the inevitable challenges and obstacles and to make adjustments and try new approaches until we can get this right. Today, I'm introducing a bill co-sponsored by six of our colleagues and with the support and in consultation with our four municipal unions to change the city's residency requirements for civil service employees to help address our widespread vacancies and to improve delivery of basic city services. We know, I want to be clear, that I do not believe this bill is going to solve the problems that we have in our city. But we know that this is one important piece of a larger puzzle. This body, thanks to the leadership of our council president, is committed and dedicated to fixing additional systemic issues within our city's hiring systems and to implementing reforms to increase diversity and ensure preferences and prioritization of Philadelphia residents in our city workforce. This is a must. Most recently, my colleague Councilmember Gilmore Richardson has done tremendous work to create pathways for our district CTE graduates, which was just approved by voters this month. But we also need to take stock of where we are right now and to consider making key adjustments to our eligibility requirements for city employment so that we aren't unnecessarily excluding those who are willing to commit to live in our city and devote themselves to public service in order to meet our city's massive and growing needs for public workers who can provide the core services that are so desperately needed for our residents. Right now, the City of Philadelphia currently has over 4,000 vacancies. Nearly 15% of the municipal workforce and some departments are significantly higher. We are facing accelerating requirements, a need for positions to pick up trash, to deliver critical efforts around licenses and inspections. One in five positions in the fire department remain unfilled, and as many as a third of library positions are vacant in particular communities. A third of our city inspectors have resigned since 2019, but licenses and inspections has been able to hire exactly zero replacements in 2021. So what that means is, is that we aren't delivering on our basic city services and public safety. We can't open our libraries. We can't pick up our trash. We struggle to provide adequate emergency response care or to patrol our streets. And if all of our agencies are stretched so thin, these prolonged vacancies have a profound impact on the safety of our communities. I have been saying for many months that every single department, every single city commissioner is only about HR right now. It is only about our staff, how they are engaged, how we are communicating with our municipal unions, with our city workforce, and to review all of our hiring practices. And when things don't work or aren't working, we must take necessary steps to potentially change course. That's also why I support the city's pay scale review, which is soon to be underway. I understand that this is a part of this process. I want to thank my co-introducer, Councilmember Mike Driscoll, and to all the co-sponsors of this bill, Councilmembers Squillaw, Johnson, Gauthier, O'Neill, and Brooks. And I want to thank the council president for your dedication to prioritizing city services to our city workforce and to know that this is a conversation to be continued and that all the members of this body are committed to the larger work of making sure that we have a robust and diverse city workforce to meet the needs of all of our residents. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Refer to committee.
And a resolution, a non-privileged resolution supporting the Philadelphia Transit Plan, a bold vision for a city connected by transit that addresses both immediate needs and long-term solutions through transformational infrastructure investment and actionable policy, and embracing its dedication to increasing equity and enhancing quality of life by linking people with opportunity catalyzing the economy and sustaining the environment. Mr. President, Councilwoman Gimm would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution. Councilwoman Gimm would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers seven bills and one resolution. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance amending Section 14504, Subparagraph 11 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, Strawberry Mansion.
Verdict committee.
And on his own behalf and ordinance, an ordinance renaming and designating the property commonly referred to as Hillside Recreation Center located at 201 Fountain Street as the Lonnie Cohen Recreation Center, and an ordinance amending Chapter 14400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Base Zoning Districts and Chapter 14600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Regulations by revising provisions related to utilities and services and water treatment facilities, and an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Queen Lane, Wissahican Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard Extended, and Henry Avenue, and to authorize basic utilities and services in a section of Fairmount Park. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by City Avenue, Stock Road, Monument Road, and Belmont Avenue, and to authorize basic utilities and services in a section of Fairmount Park. And an ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating a new subsection entitled Cobb's Creek Golf Course Overlay District. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Henry Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard Extension, Scott's Lane, and Indian Queen Lane.
Those bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 2252 Hope Street, also known as rear of 2251 North Howard Street in the Seventh Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and two resolutions, entitled an ordinance authorizing and directing the changing of the name of Langley Avenue from South 26th Street to South Broad Street to League Island Boulevard. And a non-privileged resolution also naming the 1500 block of Wharton Street, James Matoumi Way.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract and the ground lease agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the south-central urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 614 through 626 South 13th Street, including 1306 through 1310 Cater Street and 1309 through 1313 Bainbridge Street, and authorizing the Redevelopment Authority to execute the redevelopment contract and the ground lease agreement with 624 South 13th Street.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one bill and one resolution. On behalf of Councilwoman Gaudier, Councilwoman Brooks offers an ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14534 entitled AHP Affordable Housing Preservation Overlay and by making related changes.
Verdict committee.
And on behalf of Council President Thomas, Councilwoman Brooks offers a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to understand Pennsylvania Act 158's changes to state graduation requirements and their impact on Philadelphia students, and to learn more about the school district of Philadelphia's plan to implement and support schools and students with these new requirements.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Driscoll offers one bill and one resolution, entitled an ordinance amending Section 12919 of the Philadelphia Code entitled On Street Parking of Boats, Motor Homes, Truck Campers, Semi Trailers, Truck Tractors, and Vending Cars, to provide prohibitions on semi trailer and truck tractor parking in the Sixth District of Council.
Verdict committee.
And a non-privileged resolution unequivocally condemning the rise of antisemitism in all forms of hate in the City of Philadelphia and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the United States of America, and across the globe.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers an ordinance amending Titles 9 and 10 of the Philadelphia Code to establish procedures and requirements to prevent theft of motor vehicles and parts, including catalytic converters and other precious metal car parts, to impose penalties for non-compliance.
Verdict committee.
Councilman O offers a privileged resolution celebrating, honoring, and thanking our veterans on Veterans Day 2022.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is reports from committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Appropriations to which was referred Bill Number 220866, entitled an ordinance amending Bill Number 220284, entitled an ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2023 through 2028 inclusive, by revising various appropriation amounts and totals to conform to amendments to the FY 2023 Capital Budget Ordinance. And Bill Number 220867 entitled an ordinance amending Bill Number 220285, entitled an ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2023 capital budget by revising various appropriation amounts and totals. And Bill Number 220868 entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2022 from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Water Residual Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Aviation Fund from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Water Residual Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And Bill Number 220869 entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2023 from the General Fund, the Water Fund, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Aviation Fund, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And the Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of bills number 220866, 220867, 220868, and 220869.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the first reading this day of bills number 220866, 220867, 220868, and 220869. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. And these bills will be placed on our first reading today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services to which was referred Bill Number 220656, entitled an ordinance adding a new chapter, 16400, to the Philadelphia Code, entitled Privacy of Certain Health Information, to establish privacy protections for information related to reproductive health care. And Bill Number 220664, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 91100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination, to protect against discrimination related to reproductive health, modify and harmonize related provisions of the chapter, and make other related technical changes. And Bill Number 220665, entitled an ordinance amending Title VI of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code, to establish legal protections related to entities or individuals seeking, providing, or assisting others to obtain reproductive services. Respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills numbers 220656, 220664, and 220665.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 220656, 220664, 220665. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with a favorable recommendation and the suspending of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. Those bills will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. And now, there are no additional bills, so the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the consideration of a consent agenda be used for the file and consider... Excuse me. I move that we use a consent agenda to consider the following bills on final passage calendar. Bills number 220658, 220662, 220661, 220418, 220769, 220745, 210928, 220383, 220454, 220579, 220580, 220637, 220663, 220735, 220741, 220771, 220772, 220773, 220774, 220777, 220778, 220811, 220812, 220830, and 220831.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Jones. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar today.
And thank you again, Mr. President. In addition to the bills being considered on today's consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passage calendars for consideration today. Bills number 220783, 220634, 220654, 220737, 220738, 220739, 22007... No, 220740, and 220829. All other bills and resolutions are being out.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering the resolutions and bills, we will consider our public comment. It will go as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar today. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you had not already signed up for today's session, you may do so now by giving your name to the sergeant-at-arms at the table set up for this purpose in the hallway just outside the council chambers. Once you have signed up, you will be called in order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Today, we will have three minutes to speak, but however, from time to time, based on the volume of speakers, that may be altered. In order to be fair, we would like to hold each speaker to the timeframe to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to testify. When you come to the podium, you will see a green light. And when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is a reminder to conclude your remarks. And once that light... And once that light turns red, we ask that you respectfully conclude your remarks. We also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on same-subject matter. First, I would like to thank everyone for coming down today and participating in your government inaction. We genuinely thank you for being here today. We look forward to your public comment. Mr. Decker, can you please read the first name on the list today?
The first speaker we have today, Mr. President, is Queen Judith Robinson. Queen Judith Robinson.
I don't think she's here.
Good morning.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Gim, members of city council, and everyone here for allowing me to speak. My name is Steph Davis, and I am a leader with Fifth Square, which is part of the Transit Forward Philly Coalition. I'm speaking in favor of the resolution supporting the Philadelphia Transit Plan. Like many Philadelphians, I am a lifelong pedestrian. I arrived here via public transit, as it is my primary mode of travel, especially with the understanding that our bike lane infrastructure, or lack thereof, is responsible for serious injury and death among our people. Among us are diverse backgrounds. We include Black and Brown workers and families. We include caregivers, and notably, people with disabilities. If you ride the Broad Street Line or the Market Frankfurt Line, you may know these arteries are not the most accessible, particularly for riders using walkers, using wheelchairs, or even guardians with strollers. For them and for me, the best, and really the only option, is often the bus. The Transit Plan includes trolley modernization. If you think the lack of elevators on the B and L are rough, let's talk about how every trolley requires riders to step up, and yes, step down. Councilmember Gaudier, I know knows. Without your action, without SEPTA's ability to fulfill the Philadelphia Transit Plan, we won't even have the bus network at full strength. SEPTA is already engaging riders with the bus revolution. You can make this a success story. You can make the difference of shorter wait times and under more bus shelters. Support for this plan requires your dedication to transitways, specific paths meant for bus priority. Detours, maintenance, trash trucks, all necessary components of a thriving Philadelphia, but they slow the bus, sometimes nearly beyond usability. Please help connect us to each other. Councilmember Gim, thank you and your office for proposing this resolution, and thank you all for the opportunity to share these words in support of something that can truly serve each and every one of us.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Yasha Zarenkalk.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Yasha Zarenkalk. Good morning, Councilmember Gim, members of the city council, Council President Clark, and other guests. My name is Yasha Zarenkalk, and I am the advocacy director of Transit Forward Philadelphia, a coalition of over two dozen greater Philadelphia organizations made up of labor unions, businesses, community groups, and senior elderly and disability rights advocates, as well as a collective of riders interested in advocating for a safe, accessible, and sustainable transit network that allows people, community, and businesses to thrive. Our goal is to amplify the voices of riders who have been historically underrepresented and left out of conversations regarding transit equity, affordable housing, and access to economic opportunity. Thank you for this opportunity to endorse a resolution that supports the Philadelphia Transit Plan. I am pleased to be here today representing only a portion of the diverse group of riders, residents, and community groups within our transit-dependent city. Transit Forward Philly believes that a livable, healthy, and safe Philadelphia is also a connected, transit-rich, and fully-funded SEPTA network. SEPTA is a lifeline for all Philadelphians. The transit agency connects families, seniors, and youth to jobs, schools, healthcare, and commerce. Investments in SEPTA that support safe, frequent, and reliable service for riders enrich the lives of all Philadelphians by providing a lifestyle transit network that connects our communities, that connects riders to family, community, and culture. SEPTA powers our institutions, fuels our small businesses, and generates the taxes that makes our region run. A robust and well-connected SEPTA network has the potential to remedy the plethora of major issues our city faces, such as affordable housing, access to healthcare, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and most importantly, keeping our communities safe from gun violence, physical assaults, traffic deaths, and the harmful consequences of urbanization and gentrification. Thanks to the hard work of the Mayor's Office of Transportation, Infrastructure, and Sustainability, the Philadelphia Transit Plan, a vision for 2045, is a critical guide for the city's lawmakers and elected officials to improve public transit and implement new policies, planning approaches, and investments that can address the systemic transit inequities and help our city recover from the current economic and public health crises. Data shows that BIPOC riders in lower-income households are more likely to rely on buses over other forms of public transit, and are more likely to utilize public transit in general due to the high cost of vehicle ownership and increasing gas prices. With a majority of local, state, and federal funding skewing towards highways, bridges, and roads, and general investments in buses and public, and general investments in buses and public transit infrastructure are investments in equitable solutions to the various racial, social, and environmental challenges the city faces. Before the pandemic, roughly 24% of all Philadelphia residents took public transit to work. While remote work has changed that significantly, low-income communities and riders of color still depend on public transit every day. Among Philadelphians who take public transit to work, 44% earn less than $25,000 per year, and roughly half of SEPTA riders are from communities of color. A commitment to implementing the Transit Plan is a commitment to transit equity and social justice. Transit Forward Philly is dedicated to working with city council to cultivate a safe, affordable, and healthy living environment for all Philadelphians, while dismantling the generations of transit injustice caused by systemic racism, segregation, and class inequality. Thank you again for allowing me to speak today and to represent just a portion of the diverse group of riders and residents. We fully support the transit resolution outlined by Helen Gim's office, and we thank you, and hope the rest of council will do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Connor Deschimaker.
Hello to Council President, Councilmember Gim, members of city council and staff, and the public. My name is Connor Deschimaker, and I am the Coalition Manager for Transit Forward Philadelphia. I'm the newest staff member of this unique coalition of greater Philadelphia organizations focused on safe, accessible, and sustainable transit for our residents. As my colleague Yasha mentioned, we represent an array of partners inclusive of labor, business, neighborhood-based organizations, youth and senior advocates, disability rights groups, all transit riders and folks invested in the success of our bus, trolley, train, and regional rail systems. With that rider-centric mission, we are focused on ensuring that the priorities of our public transit system align with the people using these modes daily to access work, play, culture, and community. While our riders are not a monolith, I'm proud to share the perspectives and experiences of those we work with. Taken together, our membership believes that a city built for all is dependent on transportation network that prioritizes accessibility, affordability, and dependability. In Philadelphia, we are equipped with the longstanding subway and elevated trains, regional rail, and the remnants of a robust trolley network alongside a pedestrian-oriented street grid and dense housing. Compared with West Coast cities dependent on new construction and suburban metro fix, the city is primed for ease of access without a car, in turn, saving residents money, reducing pollution, and allowing more diverse use of public space with less land devoted to automobile infrastructure. But with this legacy infrastructure comes a requirement of thoughtful adaptation, maintenance, and expansion as we collectively build a more inclusive city. With this in mind, we applaud the Office of Transportation, Infrastructure, and Sustainability's vision with the Philadelphia Transit Plan, creating a more equitable fare system, supporting SEPTA's bus network redesign, and recognizing the foundational necessity of a strong bus system, offering universal accessibility across transit modes, and expanding high-capacity transportation through modernized trolleys, bus rapid transit, and utilitarian regional rail. Through this plan, we see a city that is more resilient, accessible across abilities, and reliable to the adapting needs of our workforce, culture, and planet. A major consequence of the aforementioned legacy transit network comes in its shortcomings toward access for those with physical disabilities and outdated approaches to community safety. In Otis's Transit Plan, we see a path forward through the framework of universal design, moving beyond simple ADA compliance to incorporate proper lighting, clear and equitable fares, access to services, improved wayfinding, and more and better shelters at bus stops. Our SEPTA surveys point to street lighting, bus stop seating, and access to social services as key to the perceived safety of riders across race, income, and gender identity, which should now have a greater impact on BIPOC communities due to their higher usage of public transportation. When these basic user needs are prioritized, transit becomes a much more attractive option, producing more eyes on the street. With this resolution, we're eager to see council's support of the Otis Philadelphia Transit Plan, positioning our city as one which prioritizes accessibility for all by centering the needs of those marginalized by ability, gender identity, and class. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and the opportunity to address this timely resolution. We have a tremendous opportunity here to move transit from mode of last resort to mode of choice. Thanks to Councilmember Gim's office, we urge the remainder of the council to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210913.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis, founder of WowFoodies.org and also ProtocolsForDemocracy.org. My previous comments to city council have been in support of Councilmember Bass's resolution to enforce 200425, the Healthy Outdoor Public Spaces Bill, which seeks to minimize pesticide use on public lands. Enforcement of the law is fundamental to the legitimacy of any legislative body. So today, I would like to make a comment on another law that should be enforced but isn't, federal election law. Under the U.S. Constitution and case law, citizens have two fundamental constitutional rights when it comes to voting, that those citizens qualify to vote or are allowed to vote, and that those votes are counted properly. For voting rights to be enforced, the voting process must be observable, yet U.S. elections are not observable in any meaningful manner. We have computer voting, early and mail-in voting, drop boxes, and electronic voting for the military. These so-called conveniences for voters and election officials alike have destroyed any evidence of election integrity or legitimacy. Simply put, we cannot prove who wins any election, so there is no reason to believe in any election results. I joined the election integrity movement in 2000 with the Bush-Gore presidential debacle. At the time, we were almost exclusively Democratic Party members. Over the years, we've been joined by many Republicans and independents, all of whom recognize that our elections are a disaster and do not deserve anyone's faith or trust. We need to get back to the fundamentals. Voting is a bedrock of democracy, and democracy demands transparency, not trust, and that means paper ballots and hand counts at our local polls on election day only, the way most democracies around the world vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Michael Numus.
I'm Michael Numus, Chief Ex-General Affairs Officer at Visit Philadelphia, the region's tourism and marketing agency. Today, we are so excited to offer our support for the Shop Black Business Friday Resolution, which will drive increased consumer foot traffic to Philadelphia's Black and Brown-owned businesses this holiday season. You know, because small businesses and the workers they employ rely heavily on the holiday season, I'd like to thank Councilmember Catherine Gilmer-Richerson for introducing this important resolution, and members of council for your much-needed support. This resolution reminds us of the critical importance of supporting our small, diverse, and local businesses and neighborhoods across Philadelphia County, particularly those that are at a disproportionate risk of closure. You know, at Visit Philadelphia, this very concept is the backbone of our holiday marketing initiative, which encourages visitors and locals to shop Black and Brown-owned businesses and more. I'm so excited to say that when Visit Philadelphia first partnered with city council on this initiative in 2020, the media coverage alone generates 6.9 million positive impressions that helped to give free advertising to these businesses that needed it so desperately. And our online content on visitphiladelphia.com sent more than 4,600 direct referrals to the business websites. We've heard from small business owners how impactful this initiative is, and I'd like to heartfully thank members of city council for your continued commitment and leadership in using every resource available, including this impactful resolution, to support the livelihoods generated by these valued community anchors. I'm Michael Numus, and on behalf of all of us at Visit Philadelphia, thank you, city council, for your leadership.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Obona Haggins, commenting on 220654.
Good morning.
Great morning, everyone. Obona Haggins, you guys know who I am by now. I just really would ask that the council members kind of pay attention to what I'm saying and not be on your phone, because what I'm saying is very, very, very important. This curfew bill, this curfew bill should actually be tabled. We need, and we have, other solutions to the problem with our youth. The so-called youth violence is really structural violence. The structural violence is a result of the 400-plus years of racism, prejudice, and hatred that have not been solved. Yes, there's a Juneteenth holiday, that's like a trinket for the Afro-American, aka the freedmen. This bill is actually political violence against the youth. This bill is creating a circle of violence. The reality is that this is a pandemic, this violent situation is a pandemic, that needs to be solved the same way that the COVID pandemic was solved, and that was being solved, that's been solved through funding. The Afro-American community, the freedman community, not just the Black community, the Afro-American community, those who are the descendants of the enslaved Africans that built this country, we need a freedmen's bureau. The reality is that unfortunately, crime is committed primarily by the Afro-American. Crime and violence, 80% of the victims of crime, Afro-Americans, the freedmen. The late Reverend Ike used to say, "The lack of money is the root of all evil." Not the love of money, the lack of money. So the lack of money in the Afro-American, aka freedman, community is what is causing the problems within the Afro-American community. This is what's causing the violence, the perpetual structural violence. So, what am I saying? The Afro-American community, the freedmen, need repair. We need reparations. We have yet to be repaired as freedmen, the descendants of the enslaved Africans, the descendants of slavery, our youth. We need education, we need training, we need land, we need opportunity. So instead of curfews and keep-me-busy programming, we, the Afro-Americans, the descendants of slavery, need a special bureau created by the City of Philadelphia, the Freedmen's Bureau, to be funded by the City of Philadelphia to complete the job of reconstruction. Until we get to the root cause of violence and the problem, we're going to continue to rehash what's been rehashed for the last two or three decades in the city. We've had violence perpetually throughout this city because the solution has not been implemented, and the implementation that I'm referring to is the Freedmen's Bureau. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Peter Winslow, commenting on 220322.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Peter Winslow. I'm a Philadelphia resident. I speak to you today as president of a Smart Collaboration LLC, as a representative of the Philadelphia Public Banking Coalition, and as a candidate that you recommended to Mayor Kenny for appointment to the initial Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority. Congratulations to the newest members of council, and welcome. Thank you. Thank you, President Clark, and members of council, for this opportunity to comment on Bill Number 220322AA, which calls for the expediting of the transfer of surplus public property to community land trusts. Before I speak to that, I'd like to say that I appreciate and support the comments of my people who preceded me at this podium talking about public transportation, and note that one of the focus areas of the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority in the legislation is the support of public transportation. But Bill Number 220322AA deals with addressing the housing crisis that we face, and the housing crisis is pervasive. You know, 40% of people's income goes to shelter. We have about 6,000 people every day in Philadelphia who are homeless. We have first, young homebuyers, we have old people trying to age in place, we have a whole series of problems related to our housing situation. The situation is complex, is a result of systemic barriers, it's a result of a history that we have of redlining, which persists today. We have a situation in the city and in the country where housing has been commodified, and it's become an asset class for people who have wealth to use it as a source of additional wealth that they extract from our city rather than helping the people of our city prosper. So I invite everybody, all but council members and the public, to participate in the public forum that is being, excuse me, the People's Economic Forum, that is being presented this evening by the Philadelphia Public Banking Coalition and Philadelphia Neighborhood Networks on Zoom from 7:00 to 8:30, and I have flyers that I will leave on the podium for Mr. Decker to distribute to members of council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Janet Ryder.
Ms. Ryder, good morning, first of all. Good to see you. You indicated on your sign-up sheet that you were testifying on a bill that was just introduced today?
No. It was for Pat Iding.
Okay, I'm just based off of what I have here.
Oh, I didn't write that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Sit down.
No, no, I mean, if you can, I want you to testify. I'm just saying the rules require that you testify on a bill that's on the calendar today, and on here, it says the bill that was introduced today, but...
It was a citation for Pat Iding to recognize him. That's what I was speaking about.
Okay, it was a mistake on every half. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
You want me to wait?
No, I want you to talk.
Okay.
Because I concur with you about Pat Iding.
Okay, thank you. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Janet Hammond Ryder, and for 10 years I had the privilege of working with Pat Iding as his sidekick in person. It was his second renaissance in his life, because he had already been building manager, business manager for the Asbestos Workers Union, and then he had a second act. He came to the Philadelphia Council AFL-CIO, and he made a difference. He made a difference in the community to the point where now, after 20 years, you are honoring him for the kind of work he's done to make our community what it is today. And I want to honestly say that I think he contributed to our city in a positive way. We had a motto when I was in Philadelphia, I've retired 11 years ago, he tired me out, and I had to move to Florida and take a rest, because he works hard, and we had a saying called "labor to neighbor," and we meant that. So we knew all of our city council people, we knew what the issues were, we fought for working families. I had the privilege of also working with the United Way of Southeastern Pennsylvania. We started a program where we were stuffing the bus, and we made up that saying, not the United Way, it was the AFL-CIO. He was the first union to come out and support the Diversity Apprenticeship Program, to bring more minorities and women into the building trades. And I was part of that program and wrote that proposal along with Sam Staten, senior, junior, and everybody else who supports that program today, who are still trying to do the same things. When I flew into the city the other day, what was the first thing I heard on the radio on KYW? Pat Iding's voice. They were at Massbomb High School when they started a program for apprenticeship programs for kids, long overdue, but he's still here fighting in the trenches. And I'm so honored to be here today, because I came here for something else. When I heard he was being honored, I had to stop what I was doing to come here, because this is a great man, and we're so glad to have him, and we're going to lose him in another couple of months, but we know that his shoes will be filled, but he was a special person. Thank you.
The final speaker today, Mr. President, is Robert Wallington, commenting on a resolution introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Richardson. My name is Robert Wallington. I am here from Ashby Local 1739, District Council 47, and I am speaking in favor of the resolution for National Apprenticeship Week. I think that this is a powerful tool to uplift our brown and black communities. You know, for far long, we had, you know, these low-level entry jobs that didn't pay much, that didn't offer a way for our people to sustain a livable wage, a livable income. This is a gateway to the middle class instantly, without going into debt. So we want to make sure that people have the access and proper resources to be able to live a productive life, so we won't have all these killings and stuff and fighting over loose change. So again, I speak in favor of this resolution. Thank you, Catherine Gilmore.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. Thank you. That concludes our public comment for today. Again, thank you for your willingness to participate in today's public comment session and the function of your government. We really appreciate it. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member, without objection to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda, upon subsequent objection, without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on a second reading and final passus calendar These bills have, Mr. Decker, please read the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number 220658A entitled in ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500, entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the NBO Nelson Brown Peoples Village Overlay District. And Bill Number 220662A entitled in ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500, entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the NHO Nehemiah Homes Overlay District. And Bill Number 220661 entitled in ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500, entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the YOD Yorktown Neighborhood Overlay District. And Bill Number 220418 entitled in ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes. And Bill Number 220769 entitled in ordinance authorizing animal husbandry use on a certain location within an area bounded by Reservoir Drive, Fountain Green Drive, Kelly Drive, Girard Avenue, and 33rd Street. And Bill Number 210745 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 13th Street and Oregon Avenue. And Bill Number 210928 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 12, 2900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled contractor parking to revise requirements and limitations related to contractor parking permits. And Bill Number 220383 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 17th Street and Carpenter Street, South 24th Street and Christian Street, League Street and South 23rd Street, Carpenter Street to South 18th Street, Nardane Street to South 21st Street, Kimball Street to South 24th Street, Webster Street to South 16th Street, Montrose Street to South 18th Street. And Bill Number 220454 entitled in ordinance authorizing the vacating of Cruz Town Road from Norwalk Road to its terminus southwestwardly therefrom. And Bill Number 220579 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Woodbine Avenue between 76th Street and 77th Street. And Bill Number 220580 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Columbia Avenue between 59th Street and 60th Street. And Bill Number 220637 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Morelle Avenue. And Bill Number 220663 entitled in ordinance establishing no-truck parking restrictions near various locations, including recreation centers, libraries, parks, and schools in the 4th Council District. And Bill Number 220735 entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 120 by striking from the city plan and vacating Sharwood Street and Harland Street, each from 22nd Street to 23rd Street, and preserving and placing on the city plan rights of way for sewer and drainage purposes and gas main purposes, such as may be necessary within the lines of said streets being stricken, and authorizing acceptance of the grant to the city of the said rights of way. And Bill Number 220741 entitled in ordinance authorizing the plotting upon City Plan Number 388 of a right of way for various public utility purposes in the vicinity of the intersection of West Crown Avenue and Morelle Avenue. And Bill Number 220771 entitled in ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 45S and abandonment of a certain right of way reserved for water main and gas main purposes extending from 17th Street to 18th Street north of Hart and Raff Street. And Bill Number 220772 entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 308 by striking from the city plan and vacating Nardane Street from 15th Street to its terminus eastwardly therefrom, and striking from the city plan and abandoning of a right of way for drainage, water main, and gas main purposes which extends eastwardly from the said terminus of Nardane Street. And Bill Number 220773 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of 75th Street between Brookhaven Road and Brentwood Road. And Bill Number 220774 entitled in ordinance regulating the direction and movement of traffic on Gorgas Lane between Ridge Avenue and Lawton Street. And Bill Number 220777 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Pine Road from Bloomfield Avenue to Shady Lane. And Bill Number 220778 entitled in ordinance establishing no-truck parking regulation on Philmont Avenue from Byberry Road to Bussleton Avenue. And Bill Number 220811 entitled in ordinance authorizing the owner of 3542 Calumay Street, Philadelphia, PA 19129, to install and maintain various encroachments at such property. And Bill Number 220812 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Marlin Road between Jefferson Street and Lebanon Avenue. And Bill Number 220830 entitled in ordinance establishing park regulations in the vicinity of North 2nd Street and Master Street, North 2nd Street and Thompson Street, Palethorpe Street and Girard Avenue, Masters Street and Girard Avenue, Iron Street and Belgrade Street, Palmer Street and Thompson Street, Hancock Street and Girard Avenue, Lawrence Street and Girard Avenue. And Bill Number 220831 entitled in ordinance establishing park regulations in the vicinity of Page Street and North 18th Street, Monument Street and North 17th Street, Diamond Street and North 17th Street, North 16th Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue, Bouvier Street and Montgomery Avenue, North 18th Street and Cecil B. Moore Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now, and shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye. Want to call a bill?
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members having voted in affirmative for each of the bills, these bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passus calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution Number 220783.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1952 South Redfield Street located in the 2nd Councilmanic District in accordance with terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed. Eyes have it. The resolution has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution Number 220634.
An ordinance establishing a neighborhood improvement district to be known as the North Broad Business Improvement District in an area that generally includes both sides of North Broad Street from the north side of Spring Garden Street to the south side of Indiana Avenue, excluding the 2700 to 2900 blocks on the west side of the street, beginning with 510 North Broad Street and continuing to 2929 North Broad Street. It also includes 1300 Fairmount Avenue, 1406 Ridge Avenue, 1408 Ridge Avenue, 1363 West Seltzer Street, 1361 West Silver Street, and 1362 West Silver Street, designating North Broad Renaissance, the legal name of which is Avenue North Renaissance Incorporated, which has organized itself as a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for and report concerning the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with North Broad Renaissance relating to the district, and authorizing North Broad Renaissance to assess property owners within the district as special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act.
Thank you. Slight correction, I think I indicated it was a resolution, this is a bill. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 10, nays are 0. Majority of all members haven't voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220654.
An ordinance amending Chapter 10, 300, entitled minors to revise the evening curfew hours.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for an amendment to Bill Number 220654.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I have offered an amendment to this bill. The amendment has been circulated in advance. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed. Eyes have it. Bill Number 220654 has been amended. Bill Number 220654 as amended will be placed on our second reading and final passus calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220737.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 17th Street and Dickinson Street, Ellsworth Street and South 20th Street, Federal Street and South 15th Street, Federal Street and South 20th Street, Federal Street and South 21st Street, Federal Street and South 22nd Street, and Federal Street and South 23rd Street, and Alter Street.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for an amendment to Bill Number 220737.
One second, Council President.
Hold on one second. Let's move on to the next resolution. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220738. You okay? You okay? You want to take a brief pause? One second. A little housekeeping.
I just got a little bit, I told you before. Okay. Yeah. And then one, the other person, yeah. And this person, yeah. And I, I shouldn't have, I should have. There was also an exception. All right, so this is, all right, so Jones, this is, this is the, this is the, this is the, this is the. All right. So this is, all right, so Jones, this is, this is the, this is the. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That bill has been amended. That Bill 220737 will be, as amended, will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220739.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Fitzwater Street and South 18th Street, Cater Street and South 19th Street, Tenny Street and South 20th Street, South 17th Street and Fitzwater Street, Cleveland Street and Carpenter Street.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for an amendment to Bill Number 220738. You okay? You want to hold? I'm going to take a brief pause. One second. A little housekeeping.
Just a, I don't know if it, I told you before. Okay. Um, yeah. We all remember, yeah. And then one, the other person, yeah. And this person, yeah. And I, I, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have. I should have, I should have. There was also an exception. And I, I, I should have, I should have. All right, so this is, all right, so Jones, this is, this is the, this is the. I moved that Bill Number 220737 be amended. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That bill has been amended. That Bill 220737 will be, as amended, will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220739.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Fitzwater Street and South 18th Street, Cater Street and South 19th Street, Tenny Street and South 20th Street, South 17th Street and Fitzwater Street, Cleveland Street and Carpenter Street.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for an amendment to Bill Number 220738.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Fitzwater Street and South 18th Street, Cater Street and South 19th Street, Tenny Street and South 20th Street, South 17th Street and Fitzwater Street, Cleveland Street and Carpenter Street.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for an amendment to Bill Number 220738.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Fitzwater Street and South 18th Street, Cater Street and South 19th Street, Tenny Street and South 20th Street, South 17th Street and Fitzwater Street, Cleveland Street and Carpenter Street.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for an amendment to Bill Number 220738.
Caught me slipping. Thank you, Council President. I moved that Bill Number 220738 be amended. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Bill Number 220738 has been amended. Bill Number 220738 as amended will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220739.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Titan Street and South 19th Street, Oakford Street and South 21st Street, Wharton Street and Point Breeze Avenue, South 15th Street and Wharton Street, Reed Street and South 18th Street, 222nd Street, and South 17th Street and Reed Street.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for an amendment to Bill Number 220739.
Thank you, Council President. I moved that Bill Number 220739 be amended. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. All in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Bill Number 220739 has been amended. Bill Number 220739 as amended will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220740.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Webster Street and Broad Street, South 11th Street and Bainbridge Street, Kimball Street and South 11th Street.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for an amendment to Bill Number 220740.
Thank you, Council President. I moved that Bill Number 220740 be amended. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption.
Thank you. All in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Bill Number 220740 has been amended. And Bill Number 220740 as amended will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220829.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Columbia Avenue and Frankfurt Avenue, Belgrade Street and Susquehanna Avenue, Belgrade Street and Palmer Street, Howard Street and Thompson Street, Howard Street and Girard Avenue, Oxford Street and Frankfurt Avenue, Moyer Street and Palmer Street, Thompson Street and North 3rd Street.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for an amendment to Bill Number 220829.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I would like to amend, offer an amendment to Bill Number 220829. A copy of that amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Bill Number 220829 has been amended. Bill Number 220829 as amended will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution recognizing November 14 through November 20, 2022, as National Apprenticeship Week, Apprenticeship Week, honoring apprenticeship PHL for its continued commitment to connecting Philadelphians to families supporting careers introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption of this resolution, I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize one of our former family members here in council, Hanea Sharp Brown, who is now the Chief of Staff and Senior Manager of Operations and Strategic Partnerships for Essentia for their Philly and their Pittsburgh metro offices. We were able to celebrate National Apprenticeship Week with them this morning prior to council session and all throughout the week, and I just thought it was so apropos that we are acknowledging and honoring our own Pat Eiding from AFL-CIO for his years of tireless service during this actual week. So, on behalf of National Apprenticeship Week and all those who have done tireless work in this field, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Moving in probably second all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And motion carries.
And a resolution declaring each Friday in December 2022 a Shop Black Business Friday in the City of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Patrick Eiding for 20 years of service as President of the Philadelphia Council AFL-CIO, and recognizing his civic leadership and manifold accomplishments fighting for working families, building power of Philadelphia workers, and winning labor rights and policies that meaningfully improve the lives of Philadelphians, introduced today by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, Council President. For decades, every working Philadelphian has had a champion in their corner, and that champion is Patrick Eiding. Patrick Eiding not only for the last 20 years has helped chair, served as President of the Philadelphia Council of the AFL-CIO, but he has added his voice and passion to the rights of working people. He has managed a diverse, growing, broad constituency within the AFL-CIO with grace and determination and skill and professionalism, but I think his heart shows when he also speaks out on behalf of those who are unrepresented by labor, and his voice is probably most passionate and most needed in those spaces. I've had the honor of working with President Eiding on multiple occasions, as I know many of my colleagues in this body also have, but I don't think you could see a fiercer champion for him when he went out and helped us win a Fair Work Week for over 130,000 largely unrepresented hotel, hospitality, food service, and restaurant workers here in the city of Philadelphia. He made clear that organized labor stood with unrepresented labor, and that the rights of all people are raised when everybody has the basic working protections that this country ought to grant to everybody. You know, I don't think there's any question that we can see him on the steps of the Philadelphia Museum of Art, we can see him in front of Starbucks workers fighting for a union and fair wages, as much as we can see him standing for many of our organized workers, whether they were facing off against the state takeover of our school system, to fight for responsible building practices with the development community. He has ensured that the powerful voice of allied labor within Philadelphia is also heard on incredibly critical issues that impact our city and society, and that includes calling out anti-worker implications on the Supreme Court's decision that overturned Roe v. Wade and urging action to stop the end, and as well, in urging action to stop the immense devastation caused by unregulated guns. When immigrant families were targeted by the Trump administration, President Eiding displayed a massive amount of labor solidarity, resisting efforts that would pit workers against one another based on immigration status, ethnicity, or race. The landscape of Philadelphia has benefited immeasurably from President Eiding's time and service, and whether he was there fighting on behalf of labor or on the numerous boards that he has served on, including Temple University, Philadelphia Works, the Urban Affairs Coalition, the United Way of Greater Philadelphia in Southern New Jersey, the Committee of 70, Graduate Philadelphia, we can go on and on, but his leadership in all of these influential spaces advanced the rights of city workers, unionized labor, and helped, most importantly, increase the economic and general well-being of all Philadelphians. There's no question behind every great man is an even greater woman. We honor as well today President Eiding's wife and lifelong companion, Elizabeth, his daughters and grandchildren. He is an avid Phillies fan, dedicated to supporting American-made goods in service of the cheerleading of our city. I don't think that there is much more, I think that there is so much more to add that we could keep going, but I wanted to take a moment just to honor and personally thank President Eiding for his years of service as leadership in the AFL-CIO, and certainly welcome any of my colleagues to join. Thank you, Mr. President.
Need a motion? Need a motion?
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognize, oh, okay, I see, I got a whole list here. I'm sorry.
Before, before we move.
Chair recognizes Council. Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to add. I comments to the chorus as well. You know, Pat Eiding and I, I think that we have a really special relationship. Pat's been somebody who I consider really to be like family, and so when I heard about his retirement, you know, it's a little bit bittersweet. We're going to miss you, Pat. We're really going to miss you, and so don't be surprised if you, you know, listen, I know that the person at the helm who's going to be taking your place is going to be fantastic and doing a great job, but those are pretty big shoes to fill, Pat Eiding's shoes, and so I wish you well, you know, in your retirement. Don't go far because we'll be calling you. Don't be surprised if you get calls from council, and best of luck to you in this new chapter of life. We love you, we support you, and we're really going to miss you. God bless. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and also just acknowledge the work of Mr. Pat Eiding, and I had an opportunity to work with him on an issue that's very near and dear to my heart, and that's making sure that the workers at the Philadelphia International Airport receive not only a $15 an hour in terms of their wages, but also, most importantly, during the pandemic, health care. He worked very closely with Unite here and, most importantly, making sure that the black and brown individuals who represent service unions, a lot of times we look at unions as a whole here in the city of Philadelphia, and we primarily think about the building trades, which I also support, but nevertheless, when you talk about service unions, there are, those are individuals who are primarily made up of black and brown individuals who keep the city of Philadelphia moving forward, and had a chance to work on several different issues with Mr. Pat Eiding relating to making sure we're supporting those service workers. And so, Mr. Pat Eiding, I just want to thank you for your hard work and your dedication and working on behalf of working-class people here in the city of Philadelphia, but most importantly, I do recognize in the context that the work that we do, enjoy your retirement. Take some time for you. Do some self-care, hug yourself, hug your family, and enjoy your life. You earned that and you deserve it. God bless.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we want to echo what my colleagues have said, and the main thing about Pat Eiding is that he always worked for others, and when you have a leader out there working for others, it really is a statement that we should all follow. And Pat cared about the working people of the city of Philadelphia, he cared about all the people of the city of Philadelphia, and it was, he never was, it was never too early to call you, it was never too late to call you if there was an issue or concern, but you knew it wasn't for him, it was for the workers of the city of Philadelphia. And we were so lucky to have and blessed to have Pat as a leadership of the AFL-CIO, but also your wife, Elizabeth, thank you for giving us Pat and the time he had shared with us. And as Councilmember Johnson just said, hopefully you spent a lot of time together, and hopefully you'll be able to get along now, but as you spend more time together, you won't be kicking them out and say, go back to work, but really enjoy this time together because you have given us a lot here in the city of Philadelphia, give our workers a lot in the city of Philadelphia, and now it's time for you to enjoy yourself and your family. God bless you and thank you so much.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
I think this word, okay, yes. I want to just thank President Pat Eiding, like my relationship with, has been very different because I'm new to council, but to be a labor leader and take my call as an activist and having the opportunity to share on one of my first wins when we transformed the School Reform Commission and we sat on the nominating panel together, and we spent a long, a long 30 days being the first nominating panel, and I just want to honor Pat and his compassion for the city and, you know, his love for education and just the wisdom that he imparted into me during the time we had to spend over the nominating panel, and always just picking up the phone, and I'm saying before I was an elected official, so I'm just talking just as a civilian and an activist and an organizer, just knowing that I could call him, Pat, and he'll give me a straightforward answer. I just want to thank him for his service and his commitment and just always picking up, and I want to thank you, Elizabeth, for sacrificing your husband to us, and Janet, this is my first time seeing you, but he would say, call Janet, she'll set it up for us. So I want to just thank you, Pat, and I want to thank you for you to Elizabeth and Janet for being his support team.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President. I had to join the chorus in the choir in commending, honoring, congratulating, and lifting up all of our friends, Pat Eiding, for all of his work that he has done over the years, and one of the most important things you can give someone is your time. That is one of the most valuable things you can give someone, and I wanted to thank him for giving me his time and joining us for our Labor Friday programs since I've been a member of Philadelphia City Council, every other Friday, joining almost every one of our programs to talk to young people and those who are looking for family-supporting and sustaining career opportunities in the trades. He was always there. He was always there. Sometimes I wouldn't even know that he would be joining us that week, and he was there. And even all of our high school fairs all across the city, coming to every single school and just imparting knowledge to our young people. And as Janet Ryder stated, even when she came into town, Pat was going over to Mass Bomb for one of the high school fairs. So I just wanted to thank him for giving so graciously of his time, of his talent, and his efforts for over 40 years to each and every one of us. And just encourage you to enjoy your retirement, enjoy every single moment, because you are so very deserving of this moment. And we know that you are leaving a rich legacy at the AFL-CIO, and we have to congratulate your next leadership team and all those who will continue the work that you have been doing. So thank you so very, very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. So throughout my career, whether in the city's Commerce Department, Philadelphia Commercial Development Corporation, Minority Business Enterprise Council, there has always been Pat Eiting. And what I would say about him is that, you know, hot water will change a hard potato soft. Hot water will make a soft egg hard. But coffee changes the water. Whenever Pat Eiting walked in a room, it totally changed the level of discussion, because people on whatever side of the table you were on, they knew this discussion just became serious. And so I want to thank you for that dedication. Thank your wife for lending you to us. And to say that the best thing I can say about you, the title I would give you in your retirement is Philadelphia. You Philly tough, and you've made a difference. Thank you so much, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
Pat, it's been an honor to work with you over the years in all my different roles here in life. You've actually been one of those bigger-than-life folks that have put yourself aside for the betterment of the workers of the city of Philadelphia. And just want to leave you with an old Irish saying that, "May the road rise to meet you; may the sun shine warmly upon your face; may the rain fall softly on your fields; and until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hand." Congratulations and have a great retirement. And we still look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Before I call on Councilwoman Gimm, I'm not supposed to talk as I'm up on the podium, but I have to say this, that I've never seen a person that's been involved in civic life, and I mean civic life, every aspect of it, that I've never heard anybody say anything negative about you. I mean, that is the ultimate achievement, I gotta tell you. So congratulations, love working with you, and I'm sure we will continue to do that. So thank you, Pat. Awesome guy. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Yes, thank you so much, Council President. Thank you, Patrick Eiting, against this backdrop of, you know, almost impossible and growing economic and racial inequality. I think there is nothing more powerful than a strong, organized, and empowered labor movement. And thank you, Patrick Eiting, for being part of that movement and for your journey. And on behalf of all of the members of City Council, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that motion is enthusiastically adopted. Thank you, Pat. Mr. Decker.
And a resolution-
Mr. Decker, next resolution.
A resolution supporting the Philadelphia Transit Plan, a bold vision for a city connected by transit that addresses both immediate needs and long-term solutions through transformational infrastructure investment and actionable policy, and embracing its dedication to increasing equity and enhancing quality of life by linking people with opportunity, catalyzing the economy, and sustaining the environment. Introduced today by Councilwoman Gimm.
Gimm.
Councilwoman Gimm, Council President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to understand Pennsylvania Act 158's changes to state graduation requirements and their impact on Philadelphia students, and to learn more about the School District of Philadelphia's plan to implement and support schools and students with these new requirements. Introduced today by Councilwoman Brooks on behalf of Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Thomas, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution celebrating, honoring, and thanking our veterans on Veterans Day 2022. Introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we struggle with our legislative priorities, as we struggle with our budget commitments, we cannot forget one of the issues that has faced us and continues to face us is crime in the city of Philadelphia and in particular, gun violence. But I want to put some things in perspective, that in the 18th Police District Southwest Detectives, there's approximately 185,000 people. In talking to law enforcement, Kenyatta, we discovered that in that area, there are only 22 or so known shooters. That works out to be approximately, and I got my staff working on that number, .012%. So there is a very small amount of people doing a large amount of the crime. We have to get our arms around that and recognize it. In the Southwest Detectives organization, and I don't know about you, but every time I listen to the news and there's a shooting and they say, "No suspects, no one apprehended," that irks me to the point of why. And when having a deeper dive discussion with law enforcement in that same Southwest Detectives, there is a caseload per detective of over 325 cases per detective. There's something wrong with that, that we don't have the resources to commit to the solving of crimes. And that is why, in part, some of the case closures do not happen. Another thing we need to look at over this budget period is the fact that we need to clearly delineate when a detective has to go out because your lawn chair got stolen and take a report. Now, it's important, there are sections in my district, they take it very seriously. Lawn chairs, quality of life, breaking a car, very serious. So I'm not mitigating that type of crime. But there's other parts of my district where every 28 days, somebody's gonna get shot, sometimes in bunches, Kenyatta. And if you have to figure out how to segregate what the priorities are, we really need to give that more thought. I'd rather have detectives going out to look at gun violence, look at, unfortunately, murder versus, "Somebody stole my lawn chair." And literally, that was a example given. Further, I think what we did yesterday and today by the budget amendment is my, and thank you, all those who are on the Appropriations Committee, all those who brought priorities to the committee to be funded, that was germane, Mr. President, to crime prevention. We took a hard step and we held our government to feet to the fire about saying, "We want bricks, but we aren't gonna give you straw. We're not gonna help you solve that problem." And what we did, and I was so very proud of Kathy and Kenyatta and all of the members of the Appropriations Committee advocating hard, not in front of the cameras, but advocating hard in the rooms to fight for this stuff. We gave an additional $3 million to the District Attorney's Office. Say, where you are on his performance, that is not the question. But he has hard-working ADAs that go out every day trying to keep us safe. So there is a proposal to have a new carjacking unit over there just focusing on that. And the turnover that they have in that office, because once you get some experience, the private sector and the money and the lack of a heavy workload lures our best and brightest away. We stepped up, and Kenyatta was a strong advocate for that, we stepped up to the plate and said, "You're gonna get some straw to make these bricks." And I was proud of you again. As it relates to wherever you are on the impeachment stuff in Harrisburg, but let me say this, how dare you say to us in Philadelphia, "Who should be representing us?" when you can't give us sensible gun laws for lost and stolen. We passed, this body passed, a reasonable law that said, "If you lose your gun, just tell us," so that we could begin the investigation to try to track it down for you. It is lingering in the court, Mr. President. You've been sued personally, your money, your grandkids' money, when you tried to propose sensible gun laws. But yet, you want to grandstand about who should be our DA. How dare you until you come back with some sensible gun laws. Do not patronize us. Give us some substance. Give us some straws for our bricks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. You know, last night I was at a community meeting in Overbrook where many of these questions were raised about what I think we should be calling community safety, not so much public safety, because I think it puts us in the wrong mindset of just looking at particular agencies, but really about what makes communities safe. And people were very clear that they need resources for young people from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. everywhere across the city, that we have to reinvest in the things in which communities feel valued, that includes our trash pickups, our vacant lot ceilings, the greening of lots, the removal of illegal dumping and illegal cars being parked. And that was part of the Just Services Campaign, which our city council fought for. They were very clear that they wanted to see coordinated efforts across all our municipal agencies. The biggest problem that we have is that no one entity can be singularly responsible for the care and keeping of the community. And so we need a serious attention to the collaborative efforts that go across multiple agencies. You know, I know that this body has tried and urged to bring back, you know, the reconvening of our municipal courts, of our district attorney, of our mayor's office, of our PPD, and all other law enforcement, to make sure that we have targeted goals, that we're using data. You know, I was talking to Councilmember Gilmore Richardson about how the location of the Evening Resource Centers track data, and we're not doing that enough, that we can actually target all of our resources towards the areas that are most in need. The 57-block strategy proposed by the Black Clergy resonated deeply within many of our, many of the attendees at last night's meeting, and I know that this body will continue to do so. I too will add my voice around the grotesque acts by the legislature yesterday. You know, this is not just about gun laws, but this is about a legislature that if we're talking about basic community safety, has been almost deliberate, purposeful, and willful on the unconstitutional underfunding of our schools. This is a state legislature that could support kindergarten and pre-K and childcare for children and families and refuses to do so. This starts well before any young person ever sees or has a weapon in their hands. It starts from the moment that they step into an institution, and it's all the more reason why our voices will be loud, clear, and on behalf of our communities. And then I want to switch just a little bit, if I could. It is also Thanksgiving time, and I actually did want to take a moment to express some gratitude. I wanted to especially express gratitude because I think we really need it. I feel very strongly about, you know, thanking the people of this city who know what it, who knows what it means to have a government that truly serves the people. And if we are going to truly serve the people, then we have to be of, by, and for the people. And for the people of our city who have continued to show us faith in democracy, in local government, even when we fall short, probably especially when we fall short, and then compel us to do better, to strive harder, to do nonetheless. It is our responsibility to hear, to listen, to serve, and to never quit. I am hardly the newest member on this council body, but nonetheless, I want to say how much it's meant to be a part of this particular body. Together, we've actually seen seismic changes and challenges nationally and internationally met through this city council, even just in my six years and 11 months. From the dark years of a former president to becoming Super Bowl champions, from a state takeover of our public schools to finally winning local control over them, I always felt that local politics and this council body held the most potential for innovation and meaningful change. And we have truly worked hard as a body, and we have more work to do to make this city hall truly the people's chambers and to bring us closer to our communities. I want to thank people who make this body possible. I want to thank Michael Decker and his entire team in the Clerk's Office. I want to thank Ms. Kalia for working magic with citations, to Lonnie Modesto and the Always Patient Tech Support Team, to John Fenton, who is always ready to solve any problem, our Sergeant-at-Arms and security staff, to Patty and Jared and our entire communications team for making us look wonderful, to Herb, Michael, John, and the whole council tech staff, Bob and Ami who can answer any conceivable question, and especially to Jenny, without whom we would all truly, I think, be lost. But I also want to take a moment, and to our ASL- But I also want to take a moment, and to our ASL interpreters, thank you for putting so much heart and soul into the expressions that both we have and our witnesses often have. But I want to also take a moment to express some gratitude for my colleagues. Council President Clark, you told me that it was a privilege to serve on a body of 17 and to never take a day for granted. You gave space for committees to be what we make of them. And through the Children and Youth Committee, I was proud to lead a campaign for working parents at the nation's largest retail food and hospitality chains, to have advanced schedules and a fair work week. We launched anti eviction work and shut down abusive detention centers for children. We ended a state takeover of our public schools and restored essential services like nurses and counselors, social workers, air conditioning, and water to children and families. I want to thank you for giving me the space, for actually giving us all the space to showcase our work and for allowing us to have a chance to shine. You're the council president, and you have often taken a lot of hard hits on behalf of this body. We seek to find solutions to our city's hardest problems, and I want to thank you for all that you've taught me. To Councilmember Johnson, when I came in, you gave me a binder on how to be a council member, and I still have it. You've been a fearless partner, you know, for what is right. You stood stalwart to hold DHS accountable when children were being hurt at detention centers. You're an unflagging partner on labor rights for workers, and you're a true champion for ending gun violence and prioritizing the voices of victims to ensure that there is true safety in our communities. Winning your vote and your sponsorship on any piece of legislation meant we had a happy dance in our office, because it wasn't just another name on a piece of paper, it was your reputation and voice. To Councilmember Jones, perhaps more than anybody else except for one on this council body, you probably knew me most before I ever came on to City Council, and I felt like you embraced it. I felt like you understood my voice, my clearest memories before council of this council body are actually around you welcoming me into your office, listening intently, and you never flinched when we packed this room full of opponents, whether it was about a casino in a residential neighborhood, whether it was about school closings or the school budget battles, you were here to listen, you were here to meet, and I think you were, you loved the voices of people who spoke out no matter what it was. I want to thank you for being an incredible colleague. I want to thank you for the work that you've put forward, especially on public safety. It's been a privilege, you know, to be part of a public safety committee that's had to meet some of the greatest challenges, whether it's in our city prisons or in our Juvenile Justice Center. In any case, you have always been a great colleague, you've been a great person before, since, and in the future to come, so thank you. And to Councilmember Mark Squiller, the most successful man on City Council, I am not sure quite how you drink a big gulp at every, a big gulp of iced tea, I think, at every City Council session. I think you skipped it today. How you manage to show up for almost everything, you, we will be together in a march and rally, and we will be singing karaoke at a Chinatown banquet later that night. You will jump into a pool and play Santa to Buddy the Elf. I am so grateful that you have been such an incredible partner in tackling the huge challenges of our school facilities, fixing toxic solutions, toxic conditions in our schools, and really winning resources that our children and schools deserve. To Mike Driscoll, from day one, you and your team have jumped in ready to go and eager to collaborate on key issues facing our city, and I can't wait to partner with you to tackle all the challenges to come. To Catherine Gilmore Richardson, you are a mom and former teacher, you are a caretaker of schools and children and families, you are a true and shining example for how we should use our position to improve people's lives. I am constantly inspired by how you are equally compassionate and fierce in pursuing what you know is right, and you have come up with remarkable, remarkable solutions to some significant situations that our young people and our families are facing, and I know they rely on your voice to represent us here. Isaiah Thomas is not here, but he is coach, educator, teacher, youth mentor. Isaiah Thomas has prioritized young people and creating opportunities with them. I've been so glad to have had Councilmember Thomas as a key partner in leading forward this body's work in public education. I'm glad that he is the Chair of the Education Committee and giving our students truly the schools and the city that they deserve, and our families have a true champion. To Councilmember O, there is not a cultural event or community that has not felt the presence of your office. You bring your creativity and work ethic to every problem you take on, and I know many constituencies feel truly served and represented through you. Councilmember O'Neill, you are a model for navigating the work of this body with consummate professionalism and always with the needs of the district foremost. And I've been grateful for Councilmember O'Neill's voting his conscience without vitriol or showmanship and for always being an invaluable resource for all of the questions that I may have. To my colleague, Councilmember Bass, if I ever needed to fight for an issue or cause, I know I want you on my side. You are unafraid when you know that something is right. And in particular, you have been an amazing sister when it comes to denouncing sexism and harassment in our public institutions, to calling for accountability for racial discrimination and injustice, even to standing up to some of the most powerful institutions in our city. Those who stand in the way of progress or who try to defend the indefensible had better get it right if they're gonna come before you, or they can look out for any consequences. So thank you so much for standing with me when it truly mattered. And then, you know, to my colleagues, Councilmember Kendra Brooks and Jamie Gautier, I want to thank you for fierce sisterhood, for forging some of the most successful and proudest work of my career and being unrelenting partners to keeping people housed, to making sure that workers were protected, to saving the planet, to rescuing our public school system, and advancing a real and restorative vision for public safety, and always, always being in the service of people. To my colleagues, on this Thanksgiving time, I could not be more grateful to do all of this work with each of you by my side. It is an honor to be on council because you need to win the majority, and it matters to have all of us pulling together. I learn from all of you every single day, and I know that together, we are gonna be unstoppable. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, and thank you so much, Councilmember Gimm. I rise quickly just to congratulate two young women who are really exhibiting what I call Black Girl Magic. First, I have to congratulate my fellow Gomper Stomper, State Representative Morgan Seifis, who is the new Chair of the Philadelphia House Delegation in Harrisburg for the 2023-24 legislative session. So we wanted to acknowledge her. She's a former council staffer under Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr. Again, she's a fellow Gomper Stomper in Winfield, girl, so I wanted to congratulate her on her new leadership role in Harrisburg. We know she will serve us well. And secondly, I wanted to congratulate the newest Chick-fil-A operator in the city of Philadelphia, which is located in the great Fourth Council District, Councilmember Jones, at 4040 City Avenue near the Target. The owner-operator is Serena Quick. She is a proud Philadelphian who grew up in your district, Council President, and Raymond Rosenholm. Serena is a graduate of, as Ryan Boyer would say, "The Harvard of the state system," West Chester University, my alma mater. So obviously, we went to college together. At West Chester, she became a member of Delta Sigma Theta, which is the sorority of former council members Blondell Reynolds Brown, Marian B. Tasco, and Sherrell O. Parker. Serena is also a former Philadelphia probation officer, but through mentorship, hard work, and dedication, she was selected to be the operator of a new Chick-fil-A in Winfield. She is the first black female Chick-fil-A owner-operator in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Her store opened today at 6:30 a.m., they will close at 10 p.m. Their daily hours are 6:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. Kudos and congratulations to Serena Quick, graduate of the West Chester University, on being our newest Chick-fil-A owner-operator here in the city of Philadelphia. And lastly, Happy Founder's Day to the men of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say a couple of things today. And the first is that, thank you, Councilwoman Gimm, for your years of service, although, you know, I think, listen, I got about a dozen texts asking, "What's going on?" And so while it didn't go all the way, we certainly will have to wait for it, but, you know, look, we're picking up what you're putting down. So thank you so much for your comments. We really do appreciate all of your well wishes to the body. So thank you, Councilwoman. I did want to say just a couple of things, and the first is that, you know, I wanted to follow up on my colleagues who spoke earlier about the actions in Harrisburg around District Attorney Krasner. While I certainly have had my fair share of disagreements with the district attorney, the process here, the process matters, what has happened matters, and what has happened is really wrong, because if there was any interest in really doing something about gun violence, if there's one body that can do it, it is the body that works in Harrisburg. And so we know that we have a strong support, obviously, among the Philadelphia delegation and the Democratic delegation in Harrisburg, but we really need some Republican action, not talk, but action on this matter. And so if you really want to do something, maybe you should just talk to one of us, and we can tell you what to do. But this isn't it. So, you know, it's a bunch of foolishness at a time when so many of our young people are tragically being struck down or otherwise impacted by gun violence. But speaking of our young people, I do want to say something really, really positive, and I wanted to make acknowledgement of the Eagle Scout Troop 303, which is here with us today. Can we have them stand? Come up, come up and stand, yeah. Come over this way so we can see you. Come over this way. So, you know, there's just so many negative news stories about our young people, and we have to celebrate them. When they're doing the right thing, when they're out here serving the community, when they're on the right path, we really have to stop and celebrate them, each and every one of them. And so I just wanted to take a moment today and recognize Eagle Scout Troop 303, and I want to commend Cameron Nelson, Claude Wheeler III, Colin Randolph, Darius Reed, Glenn Simmons, Jr., James Lawson, Juwan Brookins, and Kayla Bell, who's the first African-American female Eagle Scout in the Cradle of Liberty Council. Also, Kyle Howerton, Jr., and Tajee Gunther, who have, on this occasion, attained the highest rank in scouting, which is an Eagle Scout. And, you know, attaining this rank, you have to put in many hours of study and practice and skill for the advancement and the high ideals of the Scout Oath of Law, which includes performing community service to help others. And in obtaining this highest rank of Eagle Scout amid the COVID-19 pandemic, it brought among about many challenges, including secure merit badge counselors who were willing to take on the new challenge of providing instructions over Zoom and adjusting the process of earning a merit badge to fit a virtual format to adhere to protocols from the CDC for in-person gatherings. Troop 303 Committee Chair, Ms. Cynthia Fulwellen prevailed in guiding these 10 scouts in attaining the highest rank in scouting, and she is just such a gem. She is always, always working in the community out of the historic Zion Baptist Church at Broad and Vinango. They have been doing wonderful work there for a very long time. And so we have citations supported by this entire body of council and signed by myself and you, Council President, and we have one for each young person because we want to encourage them to stay on the right path, do the right thing, continue to service your community, and we appreciate all of their efforts. So we just want to recognize them today. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your service and thank you for your future service, because I know you guys are on the right track. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Gimm, for her fine remarks. And I think I'm probably the only council member who made it to the level of being an honorary member of the Squad. Thank you, Kendra, Jamie. So I do appreciate y'all allowing me to be inside your space, but most importantly, thank you for the kind remarks. I just want to take a moment, and I've been in this body for a little while, and I look at leadership and how we operate, and I just want to acknowledge an initiative that Council President worked on, which I think is a good initiative for the city of Philadelphia that I've been waiting for, for a long time. When I was up in New York about last week, and I seen some public safety officers down there, like directing traffic, doing what they're supposed to do to keep the neighborhood safe in terms of not only just traffic, but quality of life issues as well and being visible. And so I just want to commend you on your initiative based upon the recent arbitration between FOP and administration, but most importantly, led by your efforts for us to now have the ability to have public safety enforcement officers here in the city of Philadelphia. That will free up a significant amount of resources as it relates to detectives who can be doing their job and solving crimes, other officers being promoted who are qualified to be detectives, but overall allowing members of the Philadelphia Police Department to actually go and do their job. And so I just want to thank you for your hard work and your dedication. I'm from South Philadelphia, born and raised, lived down there all my life, and I think it's great when I go down to the game, right, to enjoy myself, right? But the work that's being done down there by Philadelphia police officers, I believe, could be done by public safety enforcement officers, because all you're doing is directing traffic and making sure every now and then, you know, a couple Eagles fans don't hit Santa Claus in the head with a snowball, but that's neither here nor there. Y'all supposed to catch that, y'all catch that later on. Sports fans understand the context, but thank you for your hard work and your leadership. And you played the long game on this one. This was talked about a while ago, and you stayed consistent, and now it's actually coming to fruition. And so I just want to acknowledge that because I think it's a big step in us making the city of Philadelphia a safer city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your hard work on that one, too. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to thank our colleague Helen Gimm for reminding us about Thanksgiving, reminding us that we all do our best, and we take it very personally sometimes, can be very polarizing in here, but that at the end of the day, we should always appreciate each other, we should always thank each other for the commitment, the sacrifice. Everyone in here, you know, takes the blows, they take the hardships, take the insults, takes the humiliation, and it's not over. We'll still be doing that, but we all do our best, though we may disagree with each other and many times agree, for what we think is in the best interest of the people of this city. And so with that spirit and with that reminder, I thank you, Councilmember Gimm, and all my colleagues, and wish everybody a very good and happy Thanksgiving holiday coming up.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches today for the minority and the majority. And with that, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Squiller for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, December 1st, 2022, at 10 a.m.
May I get a second? Thank you. It's been moved in second to council stand adjourned until Thursday, December 1st, 2022, 10 a.m. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Close the polls, ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Be safe.